And welcome to this forum for the City of Cottonwood City Council candidates, who will be on the August 28th primary ballot. This evening is hosted by the League of Women Voters, Greater Verdi Valley, and co-sponsored by the Cottonwood Chamber of Commerce. My name is Barbara Lutrell. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters and your moderator for this forum. The forum this evening is also being videotaped, as you look around you'll see, by YABAP Broadcasting, which will then have it shown on Cable 1, Channel 56, Suddenlink Channel 2, and YouTube. And we also have Sedona.biz, www.sedona.biz, who is filming here in front. I do want to mention that we have five candidates for three, four-year seats, and that two of our candida-- two of our city councilors who are not running for reelection are here with us this evening, and I just think we should thank them for their service. Karen Pfeifer, 25 years on council. Karen, would you just stand up? I told her she must have been 12 when she ran. And Linda Norman, 10 and a half years on Sedona's-- on Cottonwood City Council. Okay, and Deb Althouse is a council member, and she's also here. Deb, thank you, I'm sorry. So you obviously are not having to run this year, is that correct?
I have to run.
There you go, okay. So you can relax, take lessons tonight, all right. Public service is really important, and I know, as I've asked the candidates, is this your first time running for office and so on? In many cases, it's a yes. And this is very exciting, because when you think about it, what can we do more than being civically engaged in our communities? To have a voice, to represent the people. And I know, as the League of Women Voters, Greater Verdi Valley, we have seen a major increase in our membership over the last two years. We know that people are interested in being involved, and we're really thrilled that there are so many of you here this evening. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that envisions a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The purpose of this forum is for you, the audience, to get to hear from the candidates on why they want to be a counselor for you. It is also an opportunity for the audience to give questions to the candidate about issues that are important to you. The goal for the forum is fairness, civility, and engagement. I'd like to introduce our timekeeper and our league helpers here this evening. Our timekeeper is Marie Helt. Raise your hand, Marie. Okay. Marie has the most powerful role here this evening. Her role is to keep us all on time. She has two-- actually, she has three signs that say "one minute, 30 seconds, and stop." And contrary to what you might see in other forums, "stop" means "finish your sentence and put a period." Stop. So we're really delighted. She will raise the one-minute sign-- when we have a two-minute question, she'll raise the one-minute sign, the 30-second sign, and the stop sign. If it's a one-minute question, she'll give you 30 minutes-- 30 seconds notice. Our league helpers are Robin Prudhomme-Bauer and Mary Gassaway. And Robin and Mary will be available to collect the questions that hopefully you're writing on your three-by-five cards, which will be organized then into topics, so that if there's some duplication, we can eliminate it. They'll give me the questions, and we will have that as the basis for most of tonight's forum. The format of the forum has three parts. Part one, opening remarks. Each candidate will be given two minutes to introduce themselves to the audience and to answer the question from the league. So first, they'll have two minutes to introduce themselves, then we will have a question from the league that they can answer. Part two will be questions from the audience. Audience members will be encouraged to write questions on three-by-five cards. That will be collected by Robin and Mary and organized into topics. Candidates will then be given one or two minutes. I'll decide as we go along to answer the question, depending upon the time period. We are here from, I believe, at 6:30 to 8:30. So we should have plenty of time. If we have some time and there's an opportunity, we can even do some questions from the floor. But we'll see how that goes. As we get started, I also want to go over some guidelines for the forum. The moderator's role is to manage the forum fairly to all candidates and the audience with the goal to keep the discussion moving forward. The order of speaking by the candidates has been determined, and that's how they're seated, from one to five, based on drawing a number. The candidates are to be respectful of each other's points of view, speak their mind freely, but do not engage in personal attacks. What a novel idea. And the candidates will not interrupt one another. The audience is asked to refrain from applauding or any other ways of demonstrating support or non-support for candidates and their comments. So we ask you just to listen. Tonight is about learning. It's not a cheerleading contest. It's really important for us to hear what they have to say, to evaluate it, and then to be prepared when the ballots arrive, which I believe are the first week of August, for the August 28th primary. Time limits on responses to questions will be strictly observed. I'll have the responsibility for enforcing time limits, but actually Marie does. Okay, if these guidelines are not adhered to by the candidates and the audience, we will have to adjourn the forum, but I trust that we will be fine. Okay, let's begin the forum with the opening statements from the candidates. Each candidate has two minutes to tell us why they are running for office and their qualifications and skills for the position. As I mentioned, the order of speaking has been determined prior to the forum. I do want to introduce just one quick sweep. On my right, at the end, we have Bill Tinnan, Doug Hulse, Jackie Naren, Kyla Allen, and Michael Matthews. So let's give them all a round of applause for being here with us this evening. Thank you, candidates. Okay, so we're going to begin with Bill Tinnan, who drew number one. Bill? You have two minutes.
Right. Name's Bill Tinnan. Born and raised in Flagstaff. Actually, I was born in Navajo Army Depot, which is now called Camp Navajo. I've only ran into two other people in my life that were born there. Moved to-- well, I spent four years in the Army overseas, Berlin, Germany, military intelligence, and another four, just hanging out DOD. Came back in 1980, and have been living in the States ever since. I moved to the Verdi Valley in '86. I've been here ever since. In fact, when I moved here, this town only had one traffic light. It's kind of like Mayberry. It's pretty cool. I like the small town, coming from a big city. I've done a number of things. At one point, I was commuting for four years, back and forth to Flagstaff. I was a machinist and welder for W.L. Gore in the research and development. And since then, I got into real estate, 30 years of real estate, 20 of which was timeshare. Ugh. I don't know, I'm an old-fashioned kind of guy. I believe in Kennedy, and you know what? Don't ask what you can do, or what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country. And I totally believe that that is the mentality mankind should have. Make things better. Don't fight about everything, okay? And I've been commander of the American Legion. I'm in my fourth year now, and I believe that Cottonwood could improve, get better. And I'm gonna leave it at that, because I'm not a big speaker.
Thank you, Bill. And Doug Hulse is our second candidate.
My name is Doug Hulse. Wow. You want me to tell you about my life in two minutes? Here we go. I'm a fourth-generation Arizonan, who has lived in Cottonwood for over 20 years at the same residence. I'm a veteran of the United States Coast Guard. I retired from law enforcement after over 23 years in Arvada, Colorado. I removed-- my wife and I moved back to Cottonwood when we retired. I became a teacher. I taught eighth-grade science, till I retired again, something I said I would never do. My education, I have a bachelor's degree in police science and administration, a bachelor's and a master's in education. My elective and advisory experiences include, in Arvada, the Design Review Board, member of Fostering Better Community, design-- environmental design-- crime prevention through environmental design advisor. I was a field training officer, housing advisor, family housing advisor for multifamily housing. What else? In charge of developing the community policing program for the city of Arvada. And when I retired, as I say, we moved to Cottonwood. In 2000, I joined the Cottonwood Parks and Recreation Commission. I've served on the commission now for 17 years. I'm working on my 18th year right now. I am a member of the Trails Master Plans Commission. I have served on other committees and budget committees for the city. As a member of Parks and Rec, I have served with under two managers, three mayors, and five city councils, and I am beholden to no one. We work with residents to provide the parks and recreation events as they are requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Jackie Naren.
Hi, I'm Jackie Naren. Can you hear me okay? I want to thank you guys all for setting this up to start with. We really appreciate the opportunity to come out and talk to everybody, and thank you all for coming here to ask questions tonight and give us an opportunity to speak. I moved here three and a half years ago, coming from northwest Indiana, because my daughter had moved to Phoenix and was having my first grandchild. So I applied for a job with Catholic Charities here. They hired me without seeing me, and here I am. So through my job with Catholic Charities, I worked in outreach services in two different positions up until last week, when I left Catholic Charities. But that job is what got me into the political sphere here. They had me going to city council meetings, and I started listening, and I sat at the meetings longer than I needed to for my job purposes, and really started to learn about what local politics was about. And then I decided, two years ago, that I could make a difference, and I ran two years ago. I didn't win, so I'm back now, because I do believe I have some skills that'll be useful, and that I can make a real difference in this community on this level. I have over 20 years of experience in social services, with more than half of that being in supervisory and leadership positions. So I have a lot of leadership skills that I can bring to the table here. And by the way, my granddaughter's three now, and my daughter's having another one in November. So I'm in the perfect spot here to see them when I want to, but not have to babysit every weekend, right? So I do appreciate that, too. Anyway, I believe that we need to engage the public more in this whole process, and that's one of the big reasons I'm running, because we elect people to sit and do what we want them to do, but not enough people are coming out and telling the politicians what you want them to do. So we need to do better at engaging the public. We need to do better at fiscal responsibility. We need to do better at transparency with the public on what's going on at the government level. Those are all areas that I believe I can make a big difference in. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Kyla Allen?
Good evening, and thank you all for being here again. I know you have better things to do in the evening, but I appreciate it. I've been in the city of Cottonwood for over 30 years. I moved here from California because I didn't want to raise my children in a big-city environment. I'd been there, done that, didn't like it. Raised six children here, all of them graduated from Mingus Union High School, are off on their own, doing their thing. Two are still here in Cottonwood, two are in Tucson, and two are in New Jersey and Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. They went for the big city that I pulled them from when they were babies. So they're enjoying themselves. I have been on the city council for two years. I was appointed. We had three council members step down at the same time, two years ago, to run for other offices and one to move out of town. Mayor Alinsky successfully, and Supervisor Garrison successfully. So I've been filling Tim Alinsky's position for the last two years. When it came open, I thought, well, that's something I can do for two years. I can step in with little downtime. I know what's going on in the council. That shouldn't be a big deal. And after the two years, I realized we need candidates up here who know what's going on. We need candidates who understand the city. We need candidates who don't have other agendas except to serve, and that's been my whole life. I've served on so many boards and commissions. I just last week, I was out cleaning up the road, doing the trash pickup for the Audubon Society on Mingus Avenue. So I have served, I guess that's my brain, I'm stuck in service, and I really enjoy it. I hope to be successful and to be able to serve the citizens for another four years, and be able to serve those voices that are quieter and aren't loud, and give them a forum in which they can say what they feel and not feel like they're being stomped on and set apart. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyla. And our final candidate is Michael Matthews. Michael?
Thank you all for coming. I just want to let you know that I'm one of you. I'm just a resident that became concerned a couple of years ago at what I saw, that the last campaign of 2016 kind of brought up several concerns and several issues, which kind of pulled me in and drew me into this. I've been here for 14 years. I'm also a refugee from California. I don't care to go back. I've spent several years in different parts of the country. I chose to come here. I chose to come here and get involved in real estate, and I've made that my career. I've been self-employed during that 14 years, worked with a lot of great people here in businesses, been very successful. I'm getting to a point in my life where I just want to give back. I want to, I want to serve. I do that in several volunteer capacities, and was encouraged to go ahead and step up. This is not something I wanted to do or had a desire to do. I wanted to support a candidate. The problem is, and you can see, I'm glad there's five people here willing to run, but it's pretty sad that there's only five people willing to run for three seats. So I'm willing to do that. I have the time, I have the knowledge, I'm a problem solver. Like I said, I've successfully run a business, managed a lot of money very successfully, and really just want to serve the public. I don't have any particular agenda of my own. I've talked to a lot of people, a lot of citizens. Their concerns are my concerns. Everybody seems to have the same concerns, basically. That's what we want to address. So that's what I'm here to do. I'm here to work for you. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just encourage all of our candidates, when you are speaking into the mic, please hold it directly in front, because holding it down reduces the sound, okay? So I know that most of the questions will be answered from their sitting position, but the microphone management is really... Okay, now, the candidates received a question from the League of Women Voters, and they will each have two minutes to answer it, and we'll start with Doug. The question is, "We know that you have lived in Cottonwood long enough to know that there are things you like and things you would change about living here. Obviously, some of your opinions have been presented in your campaign, but we would like to narrow the focus a little. So please tell us, what are the three specific things you like best about living in Cottonwood, and what are three specific things you would change about Cottonwood?" So Doug, would you start us off? And you have two minutes.
Cottonwood is the economic center of the Verdi Valley. Can everybody hear me?
You gotta hold it this way.
Okay, is that better? Okay. Cottonwood is the economic center of the Verdi Valley. Opportunities for recreation are limitless, which makes it a beautiful place to live, okay? The other things that make Cottonwood a great place to live are the friendliness of the community. When you come to Cottonwood, people wave, they're friendly, they talk to you. They want to visit with you, they want to know about you, they want to keep you coming back. Our law enforcement and our fire department go out of their way to be respectful and friendly when they meet new people on the street, which is another encouragement. The city of Cottonwood invites people to come. It is a great place to live, and it is the reason that we're here. The city of Cottonwood also provides all of the services of a major metropolitan area such as Phoenix. In other words, we have everything that Phoenix has, only on a small scale. Three things I would change about the situation at the present time. First thing I would change is the discontent that is displayed amongst many people who live in and outside of the city of Cottonwood, and who are disruptive towards our community. I would seek to try to make everyone comfortable in our city. The second thing that I would change or improve would be the transportation system. I want to see it increased. I want to see us be able to provide more transportation to all of the Verdi Valley, not just to Cottonwood and Clarkdale and Sedona and parts of the Verdi Village, but to take care of everything in the Verdi Valley. The final thing that I would do is increase the quality of housing for low-income and middle-income individuals, because we have a shortage of that type of housing. Thank you.
Jackie, would you address that?
Thank you. Okay, so I moved here three and a half years ago from northwest Indiana. So if any of you know what the weather in the winter is like there, just to give you an idea, we left in February at 3:00 in the morning, and the wind chill was negative 30 degrees when we got in our truck. And we arrived in Cottonwood at 4:00 PM the next afternoon to 62 degrees. So I love the winter weather here. I like all the weather here, you know? We don't get a lot of snow, it doesn't get too freezing. It does get hot, but I can deal with the hot better than the cold. So that's, that's the thing I love most about here. The small-town environment is something I also really enjoy. I came from a small town. I never wanted to live in a big city. When I told my daughter I was coming, she said, "Okay, move to Phoenix." I said, "No." So here I am in a small town, and I really want to keep the small-town feeling here, because that's really important to me. And the third thing that we noticed when we first got here was how friendly everybody was. Having never visited here, we had no idea what we were going to encounter, and everybody was very friendly, and smiling and opening doors, in a way that you didn't encounter in the winter in Indiana anyway. So that was very refreshing. So those are the things that really stood out to me when I first got here and made me fall in love with this community. Some things I would change, you know, having worked in homeless services here, I can say for sure, there's not enough affordable housing, especially for our low-income folks. So that's something that needs to change. We do need more affordable housing for our working people as well. So overall, we need more affordable housing. We need better-paying jobs. Most of our jobs here are retail, a minimum wage. And there are some that pay more, but it's hard for folks to make a living here, a livable wage. And I know that our minimum wage is higher than other places around the country, but it's still difficult for people. And the third thing, and I put this on here mostly because I hear other people complain, is more recreation. Thank you.
Okay, Kyla?
You hear me? Is that good? Okay, I'll hold it up here. Three specific things I love about Cottonwood, and that's tough. If you've lived in Cottonwood for any period of time, there's way more than three things to love about Cottonwood. It's gonna go in and out here. Start with our environment. We've got that. I know, I've got it right here. I'll just hold it on my lips. Okay. No, because see, now you can't. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I can't hear me. There we go. All right. I'm a beautiful environment, the recreations that we have, the ability to recreate, the diversity of our citizenry, which I adore, the fact that we have the three-year-olds, the seniors, the teenagers, we've got it all here. We're not a senior, just a senior community or retirement community, we have it all. And then the myriad of passions that they share in our community, and what they give to our community. And then our sense of community. When I was at the Fourth of July celebration, that came up to me, and he wasn't from Cottonwood West, adore Cottonwood's community. People look at you, they talk to you, they don't have their noses in their phones, they actually visit you. That's better. Right, and then I'm gonna talk about the three things that I would change, or improve. Three ways I would improve. Promoting Cottonwood itself, I think, is something Cottonwood could do better. And I know there's some issues. People say there's a transparency issue. Cottonwood is one of the most transparent communities in the northern Arizona, definitely in the Verdi Valley. The problem is, when something comes up, the city doesn't jump on it right away and address it, and I think they can do better in that aspect. Like Mingus Avenue, everybody gets upset with the city for Mingus Avenue. It's project, it was ADOT's project. We did nothing with it. And, let's see, there's a couple other things, but I know I'm gonna run out of time. I think in the old days, when we had misinformation out there, it was in the ether for just a little bit, and then... Okay, I've gotta stop.
Testing? Testing? Do you wanna? All right. We have, we have plenty of time, we'll come back to it, okay?
So three things we like about Cottonwood, I'm sure we would all pretty much agree on those same three things. The location, we're in a phenomenal location here, centrally located, but still a small town. The climate, it's gotta be second place, and this is what I tell people. It is second place to San Diego. I came from the San Diego area. If you want better weather, you're gonna have to move there. The third thing I love most about Cottonwood is the people. When I moved here, I came from a part of the country where if you weren't born there, and your parents weren't born there, and your grandparents weren't born there, you were an outsider, and you always were, like other people have stated up here. When you move here on day one, you're part of the community. You're accepted, you're not an outsider, and that is just phenomenal. We've just got wonderful people. Everybody seems to come from, mostly from somewhere else, and, and they just immediately get that, that common bond. It's great. What I would change about Cottonwood, if you've been reading my answers in the paper, I would obviously change some aspects about government management, spending, and debt policies. On the idealistic side, I really struggle with the homeless issue and the poverty that we have in town here. I mean, idealistically, I would love to solve that and make something happen. One of the other things I'd like to change is something that I hope to participate in changing, and there's kind of, there is a divisive attitude in town, even coming from officials and people like that, that there's this inside the city and there's outside the city. Now, we are elected to represent those who are inside the city and those who vote for us, and those are our constituents. But the business owners, a lot of the business owners, city employees, other people, live just outside the city limits, they're still part of our community. I do not approve of the divisiveness I've heard. It's us versus them. I think they need to be-- those people can participate on the councils and commissions we have that we can't fill. I think we need to bring them in, and I think we need to treat them officially as our neighbors and friends and part of the community, and that's something I'd like to, and I think that we can change.
Good. Thank you. Bill? Three things you love and three things you would change?
Right. Three things I love about Cottonwood. Way out of the multitude of... I think first of all, that comes to mind is the stars. You know, in this town, you go out at night and you can see the stars all the time, because we're a small town. I like the small town. People are cohesive, they're nicer, they're more laid-back. The people are great. The central... Very important. We've got the river. Things that I would change. We need clean business, clean industry in this area. I've been on the airport commission for 10 years, I think. There are some things that the city has set up that need changed to induce business to come in. With business is gonna come higher wages. We've gotta have it. We have to change. We have to grow. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice, because I'm catching a cold of some kind. But really, that's about it. Things need to be handled and improved. We have to focus on that. And we can't do any bickering or any of the other childish stuff that's been going on on the internet, I've noticed lately. Okay, I'll just shoot for some golds and get her done, all right? That's it.
Thank you. Okay, the next question, and Bill, we'll start with you, because it's just a real quick one, to go right down. Just tell us, tell us what part of Cottonwood you live in. So if you could all be prepared to just answer that with your mic. Bill?
I live in Cottonwood Ranch.
Okay, Doug?
I live on Tonopah Drive, just north of First Street.
I live in the Reebok Verdi Apartments on 12th Street, across from the fairgrounds.
I've lived in the same home for 22 years. It's on Apache Street, that's kind of over by, between the post office and the Circle K.
And the real estate investor has moved three times in the last 18 months. So I just moved into a new house up in the new Mesquite Hills subdivision, and I do plan to stay there as long as I can.
Great, thank you. Okay, Jackie, we'll start with you on this. What are your thoughts on the partnership? I'm sure this is the chamber. What are your thoughts on the partnership the Chamber of Commerce has with the city, and how can we improve that relationship? You have one minute.
Well, I think the partnership we have with the chamber is very important to the community, and, and I have heard at the city council meetings, most recently, some talk with the chamber, coming to talk about partnering with the Old Town Association and things like that, and I think we need to encourage all those partnerships. community. And I have heard at the city council meetings, most recently, some talk with the Chamber coming to talk about partnering with the Old Town Association and things like that. And I think we need to encourage all those partnerships. And as far as improving the relationship, that's really the only experience that I have regarding that particular relationship. But, you know, just communication is the way to improve any relationship. So I would focus on that. More communication. I would wanna learn more what the Chamber is doing as a new council member so that we could develop those relationships more strongly.
Thank you. Kyla?
Kind of have to agree on that. We've always had an excellent relationship back twenty years ago when it was Pete Sisso was the Chamber Director. Always worked very well together. We've always turned to one another when we need something. The Chamber's been great in partnering with the Old Town Association and made it much easier for the city council to go ahead and award funds to that organization again this year had they not. I don't think we could have, but they stepped up to the plate to take the fiduciary responsibility. And I've gotta give them the kudos for that. The Chamber has always been very community-minded and it's not just about tourists visiting for vacation. It's a myriad of other things they do. And I think we have another question at the end that'll help me go into more detail about that. But we do have a good relationship. I can drop into his office anytime and speak with him as a council member. So I think we have that communication already.
Thank you. Michael?
The city's relationship with the Chamber of Commerce is the bed tax that's charged in town. Somebody comes in and stays at a hotel, I think it's a three percent tax. That money is collected. And I believe there is a mandate on that, that it has to be spent for marketing. There's nobody really better in town to do that marketing than the Chamber of Commerce. So it's a symbiotic partnership. And unless something different comes along, I can't see anything better for spending our marketing dollars.
Well, I would agree with what was said before about communication. It should be us, the board, all entities communicating with the city and the Chamber, whether it's Old Town or whatever. I mean, even American Legion, we would need to do something like that. So communication, I think, would be the key.
Thank you. Doug?
The Chamber and the city, by working together, have been able to bring a lot of economic development into the city. Just recently, the Chamber joined forces with the Old Town Association because of the problems that the Old Town Association had just gone through, the experiences they had. The Chamber stepped up and said, "We'll help you. We'll keep you going." And the city council agreed with that. And that was a wonderful thing because now we're going to be able to keep that Old Town Association working. And we can thank the Chamber for that. The Chamber goes out of its way to promote the city of Cottonwood to the United States and to the world. And that brings the tourists in and that brings the economic dollars into the city. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who heard something from another candidate that you would like to comment on? Kyla?
Just real quick, it's not a rebuttal, it's just an explanation. Our bed tax, a portion of that goes to the Chamber of Commerce. The majority of it does go to the Chamber of Commerce. But a portion of that also goes to the Cottonwood Economic Development Council, which also is given, saddled with the duty of improving our economic development. And they also provide something called Rotating Loan, which a business comes into town, we'll help them get started. They pay us off. We turn around and we give that to the next business that needs a foot up, a little stopgap that the bank can't take care of. So that's where those funds go to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have an additional comment on that? Okay. There's been a lot of talk around town that some candidates want to close the rec center and the library. We'll start with you, Kyla. Could you address this?
From my perspective, not gonna happen. The citizens voted for the recreation center some time ago. And whether they're inside the city or outside the city, that rec center is used just so much, as is the library. And I know people are afraid of it because typically when there's a tough economy, the first thing that gets cut is the services of the library. They're gonna cut a day off the library. You're gonna cut back service on the rec center because those are peripheral services. It's not fire. It's not police department. And so as far as I'm concerned, what I know as a sitting council member, as a vice mayor, that's not even in the works right now. Okay?
Michael, would you comment?
That's a good question. I don't know. A lot of people out there know because I've heard it. I get a lot of reports. There's a lot of people out there telling people that I want to close the rec center and I want to close the library. I want to shut down the buses. I want to do this for personal and financial gain. None of it's true. It's ridiculous. Nobody's gonna shut down the rec center. Nobody's even suggested it. Nobody's talking about it. These are lies that have been put out there to try to stop people from voting for certain candidates. So that's, I heard, I did, and actually I was called by a city official today, and they're concerned about that. This is still ongoing at the rec center. They talked to me about it. They're concerned about it. And they are gonna start, they're gonna look into it and take some action. So it's just kinda, kinda dirty. It's been noticed and it looks like somebody's gonna address that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Bill, would you comment?
One of the problems I've been told I have is I'm very objective. And I would really like to see the reasoning behind closing down the library or the rec center. Because personally, I don't see that it makes any sense at all. I'd be totally against it.
Doug?
Well, from my perspective, as the individual who was the catalyst that built this building, brought it to the city, I won't allow it to be closed under any circumstances. As far as the library is concerned, it's probably on an equal basis with the rec center as far as what it provides for the community. And I would never allow the library to be closed. Between these two buildings, we provide so much entertainment, recreation, and health use that it is ridiculous to even think about closing it. Although there have been and there are individuals that are going around town saying we need to close them. I'm not saying that any individual specifically, but I have heard it and I know other people have heard the statements. "We need to close this thing. It costs too much money. We need to turn it over to a private industry." All I do is point to Roughcut and say, "There's what you get when you go private."
Jackie?
Well, I have also heard these rumors that people want to shut these buildings down. I'm on the library advisory board and I feel very strongly and passionately about the library. I'm an avid reader, have been my whole life. I'm writing a book. And so the last thing I would ever think about doing is closing the library or privatizing the library. I've heard some rumors that people want to privatize the rec center and the library. I don't think that's gonna happen either. It's certainly not anything that I would vote for. And what I would like to do is expand the library services and hours. And then I feel the same way about the rec center. You know, people come here from inside and outside the city to go to our library and to come to our rec center. They come into town, they spend some money here. It's all good for business. And there's no reason to shut these things down. This is part of why we have such great recreation here, even though there's those few people who think we need more. But I in no way want to shut down anything or privatize either of these buildings.
Is there any thirty-second rebuttal that anybody wants to give on any of this? Okay. Then Jackie, the next question is for you. And you've almost answered it, but what are you doing as a library board member to increase hours and staff and upgrade library materials? You mentioned you're on the board.
I did and I am. So I've been on the library advisory board for about a year and a half almost now. And as a board, so what we do is once a month, we get together with the library manager and some of the library staff, and we talk about issues and things that need to be improved and how to go about doing that. So we are talking about ways to increase the hours. Of course, that's going to require more money in the budget to do that. So that's gonna have to be something that goes to the city council for approval. We don't have a solution to that yet, but we're working on it. And one of my co-board members is out here. He feels very strongly about that as well. So we will keep fighting that fight and try to get those hours increased.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next question. And Michael, we'll start with you, I think, because you started the last one, right? Okay. Sales taxes on groceries are highly regressive. What alternative would you consider instead of a city's sales tax on groceries? And while you're answering that, you may wanna think about, because there's a specific question to you, that says Cottonwood voters voted overwhelmingly to keep the sales tax on food, why do you want to remove it? So maybe you could address the whole concept of sales tax on groceries and your perspective.
I've never advocated removing sales tax from food.
Is it on?
Yes, it's on. It's on. So I've never advocated removing the sales tax from food. I had some ideas during the last vote and the last issue we had with raising the sales tax. I wasn't in favor of a point six-five or a half a percent. I had said that I was in favor of possibly a quarter percent if the city would make a commensurate cut and we would do it as a team and work together with that. That didn't happen. It was, nobody brought up, and the fact that we do have that on food, perhaps the half a percent increase that we put out there should have been, you know, not added to food. So everything else is gonna have a half a percent increase, but maybe we hold food at the current rate right now. That's just something that nobody brought up, that is just an idea that I had. But I've never advocated for removing that sales tax. That is our lifeblood here. We need money to operate and sales tax is it.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
This is the first I've heard about a sales tax on food as being questionable in this place. With American Legion, we were tax exempt, so we tried to buy all of our food tax exempt. And the tax on food itself is negligible. I mean, we hardly save anything. So I wouldn't even consider that a questionable item. Okay? And that's about it.
Thank you. Doug?
The tax on food is a progressive tax in that you pay the tax as you buy the food. So the more food you buy, the more tax you're going to pay. If you were to buy a hundred dollars worth of groceries a week for fifty-two weeks, you would spend an extra thirty-three dollars on groceries over the course of a year. That thirty-three dollars coming into the city over the course of the year adds up to a little over two million dollars in the city's budget, which is a big boon to us. To do away with that food tax could result in the city going to a property tax, which would mean that eleven-hundred property owners would then begin to pay for all of the services that currently sixty to seventy thousand people who live in the valley, plus the tourists, are presently paying for us. It's not a good choice.
Jackie?
Well, during the debates about the sales tax increase, I had a lot of people in the public approach me about that, all with concerns about raising the sales tax on the food and how that was gonna affect our low-income households, you know, that it would be taking food off the plates of people that can't afford to pay more for food. So my solution, and I had sent an email to all the city council members and the mayor because I thought I was gonna miss that meeting, suggesting that, you know, maybe we just increase the sales tax on everything else but food. And if they were willing to do that and leave the food sales tax at three percent, then I would even advocate for a larger sales tax rate on everything else. If not, then I wasn't for much of a sales tax increase. The point twenty-five percent would have given the city enough to meet the shortfall and still have some leftover. However, they did vote a point five percent in to have more leftover.
Thank you. Kyla?
Yeah, I was informed that the point two-five percent would cover the shortfall. It wasn't gonna be covering any overages. It wasn't gonna pay down any debt. And it wasn't gonna take care of our PS, PRS debt, which is our public safety retirement that was saddled on the city a few years ago. That's why it went to the point five percent. I do not agree that it's a regressive tax when we tax food. The majority of communities in the state of Arizona tax their food. And if we were to remove the tax, the five percent that we increased it would be more than a washout. We would even get less money into our coffers. So no, it's not regressive. It is progressive, as Doug said. And it's something that we have lived with for many years. The citizens voted on it. Let's just keep it as it is.
Michael? Oh, you started. Okay. So have we gone through the whole thing? All right. Well, Kyla, while you have the mic, there are several questions for you. And all of them pertain to debt, Cottonwood's debt, that a recent issue of the Cottonwood Journal Extra, a candidate said that Cottonwood's debt per capita is five thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars. Is that true? Is it true that it's almost six thousand per person? How does it compare to national averages? Rumors are going around the city debt's too high. And some candidates are stating the city debt is too high. So can you expand a little bit on how much the debt is, how that may compare to other places?
Absolutely.
And then we'll give everyone an opportunity to comment on it.
Absolutely. And I did address this a little bit in an article. And I believe Doug even had a little dropdown graph that got put in there. So it was pretty neat. And also the city's website. In 2016, there was a report done that showed the debt per capita for Cottonwood, Arizona was in the high side. However, when they calculated those figures, they didn't take into consideration two very important things. The first thing was that the city of Cottonwood carried the debt for Clarkdale for quite a while for their water company. When we finally got rid of the debt in 2016, and that was five million dollars. With so many questions, do I stick to the one minute? And then we also have thirty-four to thirty-six, I don't remember exact figures, million dollars of debt due to our water company, which includes the water company's service in Verde Village. So if we're gonna use that, we need to include the citizens too when we're gonna do a debt per capita. We are serving them. We need to include them in the figures as well. And when you rework those figures, the debt comes down to twenty-nine hundred dollars per user, not six. And it is dead center of the debt per capita throughout the state.
Thank you. Michael, would you like to comment?
I believe we have too much debt. There are three or four who sit on the dais on city council, including the mayor, who believe that we have too much debt. And I'm just gonna have to agree with them. It's not about how much debt we currently have. We need to not accumulate any more debt. And we need to start working at paying it down and building our reserves. Period.
Okay. Bill, would you like to state your point of view?
Personally think that no matter what you do, there's going to be debt because your utilities and everything around that operating city is gonna be continually improving and repairing. So debt is gonna be a constant. But bringing it down, yes, I think that's a great idea because nobody likes debt. It's a bad thing. It went down from, you know, six grand. Yeah, I definitely think it's something that should be worked on. Okay?
Thank you. Doug, would you like to comment?
The debt that the city currently has, thirty-four point five million or thirty-four and a half million of that is the water company's. As Kyla stated, there are thirteen thousand two hundred additional people responsible to pay off that water debt besides the city's twelve thousand residents. That brings that debt to, the per capita ratio down to a real reasonable number. Out of the remaining debt, twelve million and change are debt that was applied to us by the state of Arizona because the public safety retirement system was on the verge of bankruptcy through no fault of the cities. So when you get down to it, the city has very little debt of its own, only a few million dollars, which is more than acceptable. I think we need to reduce debt. I think we need to become more frugal with our money, but we're not hurting.
Jackie?
Well, the last figure for debt that I saw, I think it said we have about sixty million dollars in debt in the city. However you want to break that up, I'm sure that what Doug said about how it's broken up with the water company and stuff is accurate. But when I, through my campaign, as I talk to people and I ask them, "How do you feel about this level of debt?" Nobody that I've talked to is comfortable with that. So I do believe, as others have said, that we need to reduce the debt without taking on any new debt right now. We need to build our reserves because if there is another economic downturn and all we have is sixty days of reserves, we're gonna have some trouble. Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to do a thirty-second rebuttal to anything you heard from someone else? Michael?
Or out there, Rudy Rodriguez recently at a meeting stated that the city's debt was sixty-nine million. That does not include the unfunded pension funds. And granted, you could break that down into different categories. And then you add the twenty-some million dollars of unfunded pension liabilities the state did dump on the city. And yeah, we didn't generate it, but we're stuck with it. That comes close to getting up nearly a hundred million dollars in debt total. I mean, if you want to break it down and say, "Well, that's over there and that's over there and that's over there," that's one thing. But that's our debt, all of it.
Anyone else? Did you want to say something?
I would disagree with Michael on the hundred million dollars of debt. Debt for the city right now is somewhere around forty-nine million and change, fifty million in round figures. The sixty-nine million dollar debt is debt that would be incurred if the city were to buy or do all of the things that they have talked about doing. But the actual debt today is less than fifty million dollars. And when he starts adding on the public safety debt, it's And when he starts adding on the Public Safety debt, it's already added into that $50 million. So it's a matter of whether or not you're adding twice, three times, or adding correctly.
Okay, thank you. All right. I think we're back to the beginning, so we'll start with you, Bill. What did the council do this past year that you think is great, great policy? And what did they do that you think has been disastrous policy? So we need a great policy and a disastrous policy.
Wow, where did this question come from?
Anonymous.
What did they do? What did they do that was great? Well, they kept the town afloat. I mean, that was a good thing. Any specific instance? I can't really think of anything that was just, you know, to be heralded.
And you are welcome to pass on a question if you choose to.
And as far as bad, well, I'll hold that for a later date, because that's one of my pet peeves.
Doug, did you want to comment? What did the council do this past year that you think is great policy, and what did they do that you think is disastrous policy?
Okay. As far as great policy with the council this past year, what they have done is to run the city without going over the budget, without reducing any of the services that the city has been providing for years, and continues to do that on a balanced budget. As far as catastrophes, I'm not sure I'm aware of any for the past year.
Jackie?
I would agree that I think what the city has done really well in the last year or so is be concerned about the debt. Over and over again during the budget conversations this past year, city council members have been talking about not wanting to incur any new debt. They want to pay down the debt. So I think that that is a strong policy and a good policy, and one that I will be behind and am behind. And as far as anything disastrous, I can't think of any disastrous policy set in the last year myself.
Thank you. Kyla?
Right. We're all in agreement, I think, the budget process, but what I have specific is the council did something different this year. Every year, the budget is brought to the council mostly already gleaned. The chaff is already pulled out of it. This year, the council started from day one, seeing everything every department wanted, everything every department needs to spend. So it was very enlightening for those members of the council that had never seen an entire budget from point one and the amount of money that gets cut from that first moment on. I think that was spectacular educational process for the council that they'd never seen before, a policy that they started. There has been no disastrous policies by the council. Have there been events in the city that are questionable and we need to talk about? You bet. But there's been no disastrous policies from my perspective.
Thank you. Michael?
My answer, yeah, both have to do with the budget. And you know what? I'm going to agree with Kyla. Imagine that. She's absolutely right. The best thing they did was open up that budget process, bring the city council in from day one. I sat through that whole process. They have a learning curve. It was a little bit of stuttering and stammering, which is to be expected, but I think moving ahead, that's going to be a great process, really, involving more people in that process. And we'd like to see more of the public show up for that. I think the most disastrous policy was approving the tentative budget this year recently without sending it back to the city for more work. So I think that should have been done. It was a four to three vote. We almost got there.
Would anyone like to do a 15 or 30-second rebuttal to anything you heard from another candidate? Kyla?
And I would say, again, learning curve on Michael's part, it was sent back to the council for working. What they approved was the spending authority for $64 million. Last year, the spending authority was 80, and I don't have the figures exact, 80-something million dollars, and the spending was 60-something million dollars. This year, the spending authority is 60 million. You always put it in there, because if you get a grant for $1 million, if it's not in the budget, you can't spend it. That's the law. It's very technical and legal. So we, it was, it will still yet be worked on. I guarantee there's some things that were requested that's going to come back to us. What we approved was the spending authority, not the budget.
Okay. Michael, well, I have a question for you directly. Why did you state, if you state it, why did you state that the transit system is underutilized and costs too much? I see people lined up to take the buses every morning.
Yeah, and this is, every time I look at something and I mention something that's possibly something we should look at, maybe streamline, maybe we can work on and save some money, I get accused of wanting to shut it down. So that is something that does eat up a lot of money in the budget. I do see the buses. I drive around constantly. I see that there's very low ridership. I do, it's great. I mean, it connects Sedona with the Verde Valley, which is great, and we have a lot of people that do need that service. But these are things, everybody, well, what are we going to look at? What can we look at? And what can we, where can we find places to save money? And it's a suggestion that that was one place to save money. So they'll glom onto that and they'll run with it.
Would anyone else like to comment on that topic? I know the question was specifically addressed to Michael about the transit system being underutilized and costing too much. Yes, all right. We'll start with Bill.
Okay, I would agree with Mike in the sense that it needs to be looked at, like any end. If an entity isn't paying for itself, then it needs to be streamlined. So yeah, definitely look at it, maybe expand it. I mean, I agree. I see people lined up at all the bus stops all over town. So I'm thinking, if the city's using any common sense at all, it's paying for itself.
Okay. Doug, did you have a comment on that?
The transit system provides transportation for our low-income individuals in the city. Some of those work in Sedona, and they ride the Lynx. A lot of them work in or live in Cottonwood, and they need to go from home to the store, to the doctor, or to the county for assistance. When we take away transportation, we take away those people's opportunity to receive the services that they need. I observed that when I was in Arvada. When we didn't have transportation between the city and the county, we ended up building a community center at one of our local schools and providing all county services with the exception of food stamps to take care of our underprivileged and lower-income people. The bus system is an absolute necessity.
Any other comments? Jackie, did you want to comment? Then I'll come over to Kyla. Hang on. Jackie?
Thank you. I just want to say that I think we have a fabulous transit system here, because people can get to where they need to go. And it's going to cost a little bit of money to take the bus, but for those people who are on low income, there are ways and places to go and get reduced bus fare. But I have spent some time in Prescott, at a lot of meetings, listening to them talk about their lack of a transit system. So let me tell you that if we lost the transit system, then the people here will be suffering like they are on the other side of the mountain. So we definitely need the transit system. We probably need to expand it somehow. And I agree, it would be nice to look at it and make sure it's paying for itself as well.
Thank you. Kyla?
It's one of those events where I have the inside scoop. It is being worked on. It is being worked on to get expanded and to actually have a route, I believe, up to Flagstaff and back, not just via us, but via other communities. The debt covered by the transit system that they incur, the majority of that is actually paid through grants and financing through other federal and state agencies. It does not run in the black, but that's the way that happens when you're serving a low income. We don't run on the grant. We're providing a service. We're investing in our community. We're not doing it to make a buck. And again, it does run very well. It's absolutely essential, and we've done it for years. We were forward-thinking and have done it many, many years longer than any other community around us.
Thank you. Okay. Let's get positive. How will you bring the community together to ensure a bright future for the city of Cottonwood? So what would be your primary action for bringing the city together? And I believe Doug will start with you.
My primary action would be to do one of the things that I try to do all the time, and that is to sit down and understand before I try to act. In other words, talk to the other person, find out what their position is, and try to understand it, and then explain my position. And both of us try to work to some kind of an agreement that everybody can agree to and create a friendly compromise situation. When things work out that way, you have everybody going away happy. When one person bows their back, or changes, or refuses to move, you have a problem. Working together and solving problems together rather than trying to fight against each other is how you solve problems.
Jackie?
I think the best way to bring the community together is to engage the public more in this whole process of government. I have, for the last three years, listened to people complain about decisions the city is making, but very few of them are willing to go to council meetings or send emails to council members and voice their opinions. And the council member's job is to be the voice of the people, which is very difficult to do, in my opinion, if the people aren't telling the council members what they want. So I would like to see some sort of town hall meetings on a regular basis where one or two council members are available to answer questions of the public outside of the regular meetings, at different times, maybe different days of the week, where people can come, because not everybody can make it to meetings on Tuesday nights at 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Kyla?
I have a history of having done that in the past, and the only issue with that, which is a great idea, we want to engage the public, is we got the same half dozen individuals at every meeting. We didn't get a good, so that's something we're going to have to still work on, is engaging the public. I think civil discourse is probably the number-one bright light that we have. We need to engage in civil discourse. We ourselves need to take responsibility for engaging in civil discourse and not spreading rumors and violence and the kind of thing that's being spread out on a national level right now. I know most of you understand what I'm talking about. I myself have received a nice threat that I should be hung because of some of the things that I say via an individual sitting in this room today. I will actually absolutely act with civil discourse with this individual. I will not stoop down to their level. And I think us, as a community, need to understand that everybody has a tough job. Everybody's trying to do the best they can. Let's work together and let's talk about it, and let's make this a successful community, not drop down to that backbiting and that horrendous kind of violence that's on the national level at this point.
Thank you. Michael?
I think we do have a consensus there. It's about engaging the public. And I've been going to the city council meetings and work sessions for almost two years, and sometimes I'm the only one sitting there, a member of the public. So it is kind of discouraging. I agree with Kyla that the city does have to get their message out there. I don't know exactly how that's going to work and how we're going to get people engaged. Personally, I would, I kind of desire to get out there and get out there on the street and sidewalk and walk into businesses and actually engage people and talk with them and ask them questions. But it's difficult. It's difficult to get, to engage people and get them involved. There's a bit of apathy there. And like she said, it's the same couple of people that show up and complain, and we do need more citizen involvement. I mean, you people are phenomenal. Show up to some city council meetings, show up to some work sessions, just sit there and let us know that you care and that you're listening, and speak your mind. Please do.
Thank you. Bill?
Well, what can I say? I totally agree with everything that's been said. I mean, we don't need to go talk to people, we need to go listen to people. But we've got to be able to get to people to be open enough to talk. So maybe we ought to do, I don't know, coffee and donuts.
Food works.
I don't know. There's someplace.
All right. Well, you know what the challenge is, so that's the important part. Okay. Doug, this is, I have several questions for you, and then we'll have everyone else comment on them. But they all relate to city staff and wages. So, for example, my friends think Cottonwood City staff wages are too high. How do they compare with other cities? Are Cottonwood City employees overpaid? As some candidates have said, the current budgeted salary for the city manager, assuming this is correct, is $166,980 with benefits $215. This is considerably more than received by the city manager, okay, oh, city, received by city manager of Phoenix and other larger communities. And what are your thoughts on salary of city manager, attorney, clerk, and other, who are other wages? Can you give a comparison of Cottonwood City salaries and other cities? So I guess the question is, can you comment on the city's salary structure and expenses, and how you think that works in terms of other cities?
The structure that the city is set up under, city determines salaries, wages, based upon the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. They do a survey every year of every city and every town in the state of Arizona, and they record by department or by job classification what each city or town pays for that particular position. In Cottonwood, I understand people say that the city manager is overpaid. He is not. He is slightly above the middle of the pay range for city managers. For example, Bisbee, population 5,221, pays $112,000. Tolleson, population 7,178, pays $198,000 a year. Doug makes $166,000.
Do you want to make a comment on any other cities? City salary wages, or did we run out of time? Stop. Okay. All right. Jackie?
There's been a lot of information this campaign season out there about city salaries. So I've heard a lot from the public in my campaign about city salaries. The perception of most of the people I've talked to is that we are paying our top-level management too much money and salary and benefits. And so it's that perception, you know, that I'm concerned about. I don't have the figures that Doug has sitting in front of me, so I can't necessarily speak to figures. But it's something to learn more about, be concerned about, and if we're not overpaying them, then we need to educate the public on that, and if we are, then we need to take a look at that.
Okay. Kyla, would you comment?
Absolutely. There's a survey that comes out once every year. It's called the Arizona League of Cities and Towns Salary and Benefits Survey. I went through that thing with a fine-tooth comb, looking at our employees, every employee we have, comparing it to it, and we're not overpaying our employees. There are a few positions that are overpaid. There are four positions that are underpaid. The city does a good job of trying to keep everybody within the market so we don't lose people to greener pastures. That being said, our contract employees are overpaid. Absolutely. We have four contract employees. City manager is not above his pay scale. The other three are. Previous council was rubber-stamping those salary increases, and it should have never happened. As soon as they reached the top of their pay scale, they should have stopped receiving any further raises. That's what the rest-of-the-line employees do. So yes, that's something the council's addressing as hard as we can. Sometimes it's a struggle because there are legal issues that we have to deal with, but I will absolutely 100% agree that yes, our contract employees are overpaid.
Thank you.
If you've been paying attention, you know this is one of my issues. They did mention the city manager. So if you go to payscale.com, you'll notice the average national salary for a city manager's $85,000, and only 10% make $160,000 or more, and you just heard where ours makes $166,000, and I believe that was before his latest salary increase. So that gives you some perspective. I can go out and I can get statistics over here to prove my case, and they can go out and get statistics over there to prove their case. But this is Cottonwood, and we need to think about Cottonwood and what we can afford. So I believe that there are several employees at the bottom that aren't being paid enough. And I hear from a lot of employees. I've had a lot of them reach out to me, and they know where the dead weight is. And I've had a city official, and I'm not going to name that person now, that says that yes, the city manager has created a monster with somebody's top-heavy management salaries. So that's where we're at.
Okay. Bill, did you want to comment?
Well, in a sense, I kind of agree with Mike, that it appears that there are a number of people that are overpaid, but if you go to the correct sources, this organization for Arizona, and try to keep it Arizona-specific, and you're comparing apples and apples, then it makes sense. It's when you get the apples and oranges in there that it just kind of goes haywire. And then, too, you've got a lot of people that's hiding behind a nice little iPad or laptop that just likes rumor control. So take it with a grain of salt.
Okay. Would anyone like to do a 30-second rebuttal, comment, whatever, to that? Okay. Our next topic is economics. And although the city claims to be the economic center, and we'll start with you, Jackie, although the city claims to be the economic center of the Verde Valley, the average per capita worker's pay is only $19,000. capita worker's pay is only $19,914 a year, assuming that's correct, and the majority work in Sedona due to the lack of jobs in Cottonwood, what would you do to change this? Go, girl.
Not a tough question at all. I think I go back to, we need to attract better-paying jobs to Cottonwood. There is a lot of authenticity to the statement that this is the economic hub, this is the... You know, we have the shopping here, we have the rec center here, we have the library, and we get a lot of people from the other Verde Valley communities coming here. So yes, we probably are the economic hub. But we do need to attract businesses here that pay more, so that we can keep our people working here, rather than having to go to other communities to work. And so that's how I would attack that, would be to look at bringing in better-paying jobs.
Okay. Thank you. Kyla?
I would have to agree with Jackie on that. Absolutely, we always... Any community wants to bring in better-paying jobs. We're not gonna get the better-paying jobs until we get the proper housing. We're not gonna get the proper housing until... It's a very difficult, detailed thing to try to say we need to get better jobs, we need to get more jobs. We have to... We can't keep our doctors here in Cottonwood. We have some amazing hospital right there, and the doctors come in and then they go out, because we don't have the resources that they want here in Cottonwood. We're working on it, it's not gonna happen overnight. I remember Cottonwood 15 years ago, compared the number of jobs that are here today that were here then, it's increased exponentially. Not most of our employees go to Sedona for jobs. I can guarantee that. Do a lot of them, absolutely. It's... For me, I look at it like people have jobs in Sedona, and they can't afford to live there, so they live in Cottonwood. So you can twist that any way you want to. We do have to get jobs, and I think we have to be creative about bringing those jobs in. Our Economic Development Director has been working on that, and we hope to continue to address that.
Michael?
I think we could talk about this for an hour. There are certain economic realities we need to face here. One is, city council just can't create jobs. If I could, I would just bring all kinds of high-paying jobs up here. We're in a rural area, okay? Transportation costs would be more for any business. We don't have a really highly skilled and educated workforce. It's just an economic reality. I would love to see all those things happen. I would love to see these people brought out of poverty with great jobs. The best thing that government can do, essentially, is stay out of the way. I hear this from a lot of businesses in town. Stay out of our way, quit putting hurdles in front of us, and let us do our thing. And I believe that's probably the best policy. The best thing and brightest thing that's happening in Verde Valley right now is the VACT program. That is phenomenal. It's just got off the ground again and started. My daughter just graduated from the culinary classes this year, and it's a phenomenal thing. It's teaching people to get jobs. I believe they wanna train people for HVAC soon, and there are companies in the Verde Valley here that are ready to start paying them $20 to $25 an hour right out of school. So that is our... That's our best thing going right now.
Could you say what that program is again, in case some people are not familiar?
It's VACT, and it's a... It's a school district unto itself within our area here, and it's... Yavapai College is a great part of that. They're teaching people welding, firefighting, phlebotomy, jobs that are needed in the area. The culinary thing. So they're training people, actually, take jobs that are in demand, that businesses are telling them are in demand in our area right now. And they pay well, because they're trained well.
So it's a training facility. Okay. Thank you. Bill, would you like to comment?
Okay. One thing I don't understand is, we talk about creating affordable housing. Whether it's apartment or homes, the homeowner, or builder, or whoever it may be, is going to sell or lease for as much as they can get. It's human nature. Now, jobs, though, is something we can do something about. We need to bring in the industry or business to create the income to afford the housing. I don't see where we can tell an owner, "No, you can't rent your home for $1,500 a month. You can only do it for $1,000." I don't think that'll go over very well. So anyway, I don't see where that could happen.
Okay. Thank you. Doug?
Mike is on the right track with VACT. It is a high-school educational program, teaching trades. It teaches construction, electronic... or electrician, plumbing, building trades, welding, et cetera. And when they graduate from the school, and I should say also fire science, because they do teach fire science at the high-school level. So these kids are ready, when they graduate from high school, if they've gone through the industrial training, to go out and perform these jobs. There are contractors and businesses that are waiting to hire them, as Michael pointed out, and they are being hired. It's just a matter of catching up with what's going on.
Okay. And Jackie, did I start with you?
Yes.
Okay. All right. This person who wrote this question said, "Look around, I see no brown faces here. What would you do to engage the minority in our community, as active and part of the community?" Kyla?
I think you need to look harder at me.
Good girl.
And Christian Oliva Del Rio, our once-mayor, Ruben Hardigie. We do have participation. Do we need more? Absolutely. Absolutely, we do. And it is a tough thing to engage, but I think Cottonwood has been doing a great job of reaching out. Ruben is pretty darn capable of reaching out and communicating our needs to that populace. I think as we progress, as we grow, that populace has gotten a louder voice. Obviously, I'm here. So I think there's always something we can do, but I think we need to understand that we are here. Just because we're not here in abundance, we are here.
Thanks, Kyla.
I believe you're from East L.A., eh? All right. I'm a little further south than Escanito. But as far as engagement, I have heard from several of them in my campaign, and I've been in contact with some of the Latino community in our neighborhoods, and they're great people. They're phenomenal, and they put on some great parties at their house, man. You wanna talk about some food? In the neighborhood I was living in, before I just moved into my new house, I mean, they do it up. It smelled so good. We do have that. Like I said, Christian is a leader in our community. Kyla is a leader in our community. So we just need to treat them like everybody else, and there's no special engagement. We don't need to reach out. We just need to treat them fairly and with respect, and just like we would anybody else. They'll come around.
Bill?
I think it's a little bit with getting people... And there's a little sense of apathy going. Just did, but we can't drag 'em in kicking and screaming.
Doug?
Well, I agree, there's not a lot of color in our audience tonight, but it's been my experience, having grown up in Arizona, with the Navajos, the Hopis, and the Hispanics. They're not, a lot of the time, interested in associating with the white population themselves. They tend to take more to themselves, state of themselves. However, if you come to the rec center during the day, when people are using the rec center, you'll find all colors, all sizes, and both sexes in the rec center, using the facilities, and they're visiting back and forth with everybody else. So there is a lot of community involvement where they want to be involved. But many times, they have their own activities that are more concerning to them than what we're doing, and they don't often get involved in politics as the rest of us do. Ruben is one of the exceptions.
And Kyla?
No, I know. I think this goes back to what I was saying about engaging the public. Engaging the public in general. So in my campaign, in my work, I have talked to people of all different races here, white people, black people, Hispanic people, plenty of Native Americans around town, too. So I think it's more about, maybe we start by going to where they are. You know, if they're at the rec center, then we go in and we engage in conversations with people at the rec center, if they're willing to do so. And so that may be the real way to begin, is to go out to where they are, meet them where they are, and just engage in conversations.
Okay. We're gonna start with you, Michael, on this one. Do you see the Verde Valley Senior Center as a vital and essential service to our local communities? And if so, would you, as a city council member, vote for annual increases in your budget, commensurate with the cost of living increases in support of the Verde Valley Senior Center, which is a line item in the Cottonwood budget?
Yeah, I'd say I support a little bit. I'm one of Elaine's drivers. I deliver Meals on Wheels every Wednesday, and it's, at the same time, heartbreaking and it's very rewarding. I meet a lot of great people out there, a lot of people that are in need, I get to see that. But like I said, it's very heartbreaking. Today was no different. And I would like to see, and be able to get the budget to a point, where we could be very generous in what we give them, more so than just the cost of living. And I believe that's possible, that's coming. We've got a new city council coming, we've got a new city manager coming. I'm really positive and encouraged by what we see and what some of us see that's gonna happen in Cottonwood. And I think we'll be able to do some of those things.
Thank you. Bill, would you like to comment?
No, I would totally agree with Mike on that case. I mean, we've got new and improved ideas coming up, so... Trouble is, if we start interjecting X amount of dollars into any particular program, it's gotta come from somewhere. So we gotta be careful where it comes from.
He doesn't wanna give him his cold, but he's willing to give it to me. It's okay. All right. I already had one, so I'm fine. Doug, go ahead.
I would be in... I'm in favor of supporting the Senior Center. I think it's an important part of our community, because the average age in our community is 51 and change, and a good percentage of our community are seniors. The majority of the people moving into Cottonwood and the Verde Valley are seniors. I would support increasing the funding for the Senior Center, as long as it does not affect the bottom line of the budget. In other words, there are things... Pardon me. That have to be taken care of. To begin with, we have to be setting back money for our reserve funds for the next recession. We have to be taking care of the infrastructure that we've let go because of the last recession, and we have to be replacing equipment. If we can do all of those things and continue to provide more income to the Senior Center, I'm all in favor of it.
Jackie?
I think the Senior Center provides a very valuable service to the seniors in the community, and Elaine does a fabulous job of providing those services with a little bit of money that she's given. Having said that, I also agree with most of what everybody's saying about, I would be able to support some increases in that, as long as we have these other things in a budget taken care of. We have to bring down the debt, we have to build a reserve, and we have to know that we can afford to give more money to the Senior Center, and maybe some other things in town, and be, you know, be sure that we can afford to do that. But I would be all in favor of trying to increase that once we get there.
Kyla?
I happen to sit on the board of the area agency on aging, and I went to a meeting today in Flagstaff. Insane, go to Flagstaff and zip back here in time to do this. But always have good things to say about Elaine Bremner and our Senior Center. In fact, they have glowing things to say, because the way Elaine manages it, she feeds far more people than the money that she's given should provide. That's just one of the things that she does very well. A good thing that's happened is, that agency was fully funded this year, even more than they initially requested. So we have a lot of people typically on waiting lists to get food, to be able to be served. She said the waiting list is gonna be gone. So the city is continually desiring to assist Elaine. Again, it's a budget matter, and that's when it gets hashed out, but that is not to not say Elaine has done an amazing job.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We have only about two or three more questions. So if you have a question that's burning in your mind, please fill it out on the card in Robin or Mary. We'll come pick it up, and we'll be working towards the close. To encourage more participation at the rec center, would you consider not charging additional fees to our community neighbors? And recognizing the communities around us, and the fact that they contribute in so many ways, shopping, taxes, labor force, et cetera, to Cottonwood. One fee would be encouraging, promote goodwill, and boost revenues. So rather than charging an additional fee... Who would like to start? Where did we end? I think we started... All right. Doug, would you start?
The question that was just asked is one that's going to be discussed in August at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. We have an individual that wants to present an idea about charging the same rates across the Verde Valley, and it's something to be considered. When the city decided to do the rate schedule that we have now, it was based upon the marketing people that helped us set up the recreation center. Across the United States, if you don't live in the recreation district or the community where the recreation building is, you pay an additional fee, because you don't support, you're not responsible for what happens. For example, the recreation center is still being... The bond is still being paid off. If, in the unlikely event the city were to go bankrupt, you, as residents of Cottonwood, would be paying for it, not the people who live outside the city.
Well, I think that I'm gonna need to agree with Doug on most of what he just said. But, you know, the recreation center, there is a debt owed for that, and we need the recreation center to be able to pay most of that, and I don't believe that it currently is. So I don't know how it would work out to charge the same rate. I think it would have to be something in the middle of where it is now, right? So that the current City of Cottonwood residents would end up paying more, and everybody else would end up paying less, to try to even it out and make it across the board. But he's also correct, in rec centers across the nation, this is how they do it. They charge a lesser amount to the people that live inside their city limits, and more to the people that come from outside. So it's consistent with what is going on across the nation.
One of the reasons that there's a different price charge is, we get state-shared revenues for every individual that lives within the city limits. The City of Cottonwood receives funds back from the state, called state-shared revenues, for every person that lives in the city. For those that live outside the city, we're not receiving those state-shared revenues. Hence, we need to bring you up, basically, to par, in order to consider it being even, that we're getting the appropriate amount of money. You'd have to sell me good on this one, and I know it's not gonna make me a friend to a lot of people, but the fact is, it's a service inside the city. The city citizens have done a lot of payment on that. You have to show me how, why I should charge the citizens in the City of Cottonwood more, and the citizens outside the City of Cottonwood less, in order to make that work. I'm saying I'm open-minded for it, but you'd have to sell me on it.
I've seen the rates, what it costs to be a member here is phenomenal. I mean, it's really affordable. And I guess the Parks and Recreation Commission's gotta look at whether they can raise rates. Rates gotta go up eventually, I mean, at least every year. Costs go up. It costs more to pay these people, it costs more to take care of this building, everything goes up. It's... A city service isn't always gonna break even, okay? The rec center does not break even, it probably isn't going to, and you can't raise rates enough to where it will. It is a service. We're gonna keep it open, we're gonna pay for it, no matter what it costs. It's a necessary thing, such as the library. I mean, those are something that are gonna stay, and we need them in our part of our community. That being said, the tennis courts do need to be resurfaced. They're horrible. I went and looked at them. My father-in-law, who is Mr. Tennis Bud Collins, God rest his soul, would be horrified at that. So anyway, just had to get that plug in there. But now, the rec center's here to stay. We do need to look at that. I would like to see rates equalized. I would just... I'd just like things being fair.
Could you use the mic? This is being recorded. It's my fault. I've got the last...
I agree with everything that's been said so far. I agree, Mike. I would love to see the rates become equal, because I don't see any sense... I mean, I kinda think that the ones for the citizens are kinda high, but if you live out of the city, they're even higher. I'd love to see it equal, but I'd really like to be at that Parks and Rec meeting in August that you were talking about. I'd like to see how that comes out.
Okay. Would you support a 2% to 3% per year increase for five years? Well, I'm talking into my phone. Okay. Okay. I think it's getting late, don't you? Okay. Would you support a 2% to 3% per year increase for five years to bring up the cost and to recover the dollars for, I would imagine, paying the bond that was taken on this? So would you want to accelerate the payment on the bond for the rec center by raising rates for 2% to 3% for five years? Let's start with you, Doug.
Okay. The Parks and Rec Commission raised the rates first time since the center opened two years ago. We saw a drop in membership when we raised the rate. The rate only went up 3%. We considered raising it again this year and decided that we're going to wait at least two more years before we raise rates again because we don't want to drive off more members. So to raise it 2% to 3% just to pay off the bond really makes no sense. The bond itself is already covered by a tax that was applied starting in the year of 2007. And it was a one penny sales tax that expired, that was used for sewer, that the city continues to collect. And 2/10ths of that 1 cent pay for the rec center building or the bond. The operating expenses come out of the city budget, which right now runs just over a million dollars a year.
Great. Did you want to add something, Jackie?
I think I agree with Doug's approach. I don't know that I would be in favor of raising it every year. I would need a lot more information to make a decision on that, though. Because I like to have lots of information and research before I make decisions. But, so that's something that I would have to be sold on. You'd have to really sell me on why that would be in the best interest of everybody who lives here. And then I'd want to know what the people think. So I guess on that, I could keep an open mind and do that research if it came up.
Thank you. Kyla?
And I agree with Jackie again. As Mike was saying, and I know lightning's going to strike me because we keep agreeing. We want this facility to stay like it is. We want it to be a beautiful facility. And we know our expenses at home are going up. My grocery levels go up. When I try to buy things to do cleaning, the prices are going up. It goes up for the city as well. How do we cover those costs? We cover it by raising rates. They're not putting it in somebody's pocket somewhere or building it in the bank. It's continuing to support this center. So am I in favor of increasing rates eventually? Absolutely, yes. It's going to have to be done. It's not a popular thing to say, but if my rates are increasing at home, then we need to increase rates for the rec center. And I have not got a bunch of negative feedback on that, believe it or not. I've gotten very positive feedback because members know what they're getting. They know how wonderful this facility is, how well it is kept up every year. So I don't think that would be too big of an issue.
Michael?
And I agree. I don't think we're going to run people off because it is a phenomenal facility and still a pretty good bargain, especially compared with the private sector. Talking about percentages and raising percentages, there's not enough information. What we need to do is we need to look at, okay, what is the membership fee? What does that percentage look like in dollars? And we have to remember that a lot of our citizens don't make a lot of money. So we have to balance that. There is a fair balance in there somewhere, and we have to look at doing that. But yeah, it is inevitable that prices go up. And that's just going to have to be tracked. A lot of it has to do with demand. Is the rec center at capacity? If it's at capacity, you can probably raise rates, and you can probably survive that. You're not going to have to have people running out the door. If you're not, then you need to consider that, too. So it's about the market.
Okay, Bill, do you want to give a final comment on that?
I think, again, everything that everyone has said makes total sense. But I would also be curious, if we're not at capacity, to, if we evened out the membership cost at a lower rate across the board. The Verde Village itself getting in for, say, Cottonwood's rates, would an increase in membership maybe eliminate the possibility of a raise?
Thank you. Okay. While you have the microphone, the next question is, Flagstaff is developing a climate action plan. What are your views on Cottonwood following suit? On a climate action plan?
I personally hope we never get that big.
Okay.
I mean, that's my hometown. It's destroyed. You can't see the stars at night, guys.
Doug, do you want to comment?
I'm not sure what Flagstaff's climate plan is. I'm with Bill there. Flagstaff is where I grew up as well. Problem I have is, is the Flagstaff today is not the Flagstaff we grew up in. And the culture up there is totally different than the culture that we grew up under. I don't know enough about their climate plan to know whether I would agree or disagree with it. I have my own views about the climate. It's hot.
Jackie?
I'm not sure that a climate plan will change that. Right? So this is another one of those things. This is the first time I'm hearing about a climate plan in Flagstaff or anywhere else. So that's something I would really need to research and look into before I could say whether or not I think we need one. But I'm hoping, like Bill, that we don't. And that we don't grow big enough where we need those kinds of things.
Kyla?
That question because that is something I'm not terribly familiar with. I know the city of Cottonwood does not have a huge carbon footprint. We're usually very careful about that. We don't have a heat bubble. You can drive from here to Phoenix, and you know when you've hit the heat bubble when you're going to Phoenix. We don't have that here yet. So this is something I'm going to have to look into. I'll very honestly say I do not know enough about this topic, and I will look into it. And if somebody wants to call me later with a question, I'm available.
Thank you. Michael?
Yes, I think something needs to be done about Flagstaff and warming it up up there in the winter. So, no, we are too small. I agree. This is just something that's just way off the radar for Cottonwood.
Thank you. Okay. There's one last question, and it's, we've talked quite a bit about economic development, and all of you mentioned that we need to bring jobs. This question says, what type of business would you like to see in Cottonwood? What, and really think in terms of one area. You know, when you look back over the last several years, the wine industry was a really innovative, creative approach to economic development in Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. So what's the next creative or major business area that you would like to see in Cottonwood? Who would like to start? Kyla, let's start with you.
I think probably one of the most forward-thinking things we could do is to promote online businesses, to promote the use of the internet. Because number one, it doesn't take a huge footprint, as we were just speaking of. You can do it from your home. You can do it from your office. But I think that's the wave of the future. Number one, we want to support our brick and mortar businesses. That is such a struggle right now. Because you and I can get online and buy whatever we want, just like that, and get it delivered to us in five days. And that's not supporting our local businesses. We need to support them. But I think also, our businesses need to think outside the box. We need to make opportunities for those people to use the technology that we're given. And benefit our own community with that way. And I think with our, of course, our baby boomers aren't going to do that. And I know some of us are kind of savvy on the computers, but most of us aren't. But our millennials are. They're the ones that are going to bring us into that future. And we need to cater that and see what's available out there for them.
Thank you. Michael?
That's a very good question. I just don't have a magic bullet for that. I believe we need to continue, like I mentioned, the VAC program. We need to continue to train our workforce, make them capable of getting some of these jobs. And I believe if we create that workforce, businesses will be attracted because of that. But basically, like I say, government just needs to stay out of the way, let those businesses decide whether they want to come up here or not. We need to help educate our population and get them trained so that they can do these jobs. And I think it'll just grow naturally.
Thank you. Bill, would you like to comment?
Again, I totally agree.
Okay.
Completely, yeah. I can't think of another thing.
You agree with which one?
Mike, mostly, but everybody along the line. I can't think of any specific type of business I would love to see come in here. I mean, education is exceedingly important. Or, you know, even if it's culinary or whatever. God. Whatever we can use, as long as it's clean. Not going to mess up the sky.
Okay, thank you. Doug, would you comment?
One of the industries that I would like to see come to Cottonwood would be, pardon me, let me start over. What I would like to see is the information technology move into Cottonwood. Along 260 corridor where we have industrial, commercial land that can be developed. If we have information technology moving in, we can have companies come in here. Because we do have fiber optic capabilities for computer. We can have computer storage companies that build large buildings that do not distract, create no emissions. And provide security by backing up all of the information for customers all over the United States. They don't have to move. Comes in automatically. They store it. They then return it back to the owners as they need it.
Thank you. Jackie?
I am not at all sure what kind of business I think we should be attracting, but I do know that we need to be attracting them. What I don't want to see, because we do need to support our local, small businesses the way they are, is big-name stores and restaurants coming in here. I like the flavor of what we have now and want to keep it that way. But we do need to attract those higher-paying jobs, whether it be internet, or IT, or manufacturing, or whatever it is. I think we need to market somehow to encourage them to come here.
Okay, thank you. Before we have our candidates each give their two-minute closing, I would just invite you to give them all a hand and thank you all for being here. And I think you should give yourselves a hand as well. You had great questions. So we really appreciate that. On behalf of the league, I would like to thank you. Okay, candidates, this is your chance, now that you're worn out and exhausted, to do your two-minute pitch on closing. And why you want everyone's vote, it's here. And I'm actually willing, Bill, to give you my microphone.
You're done with it, huh?
No, but you actually started.
I know.
Okay, thank you. One thing that we haven't covered a lot is the budget. I want to make these clear. I'm going to use my two minutes for that. And so there's been a lot said about that. Don't look at what they budget, okay? What you need to look at is, you can look at the annual financial reports. They say they've got financial transparency, but believe me, it'll take hours to sit there and filter through it, figure it out, and nail these things down. But they say they've cut the budget every year. We've cut spending every year. We're cut to the bone. I've got the last 10 years here from the CAFERS, the annual financial reports. Spending has increased every single year in the last 10 years, except for one year. Went down 2 million, and the next year it went up and actually increased by 2 million. So one year, spending did not increase. Here, this is from the tentative budget that's been published by the city of Cottonwood. Sales tax comparison, 10 years. The sales tax revenue has increased every year for the last 10 years. State shared sales tax comparison, it looks like the state shared sales tax the city of Cottonwood has received has increased every year over the last 10 years. Highway user revenue funds have decreased a couple of years there, and they've continued to climb. And every one of these statistics is at their all-time high for the last 10 years. Franchise taxes, same thing. Water service user fees, I'm sure you all know, have also gone up every year and are at their all-time high for the last 10 years. So they do claim that they don't have a spending problem. They have a revenue problem. What I see is, they have a spending, but they're spending, and their revenue is also going up. So why can't that be balanced? Why are we running into this where we have to raise taxes? Everybody's paying more taxes because they're paying more for everything. Why do we have to raise the rate? So this is my thing. This is my mission. This is what I want to work on. And I believe we can. We're almost there. We've almost got a consensus. And I believe it's going to go that way. Thank you.
I'm going to touch on that real quick, and then I'm going to say why you should vote for me. The taxes that Michael's showing, it's a little bit misleading because what we're not showing in there is we're not showing the grants that come in and out, which increase our final dollar number. The city itself is not paying that. It's a grant coming in. It's being paid. It's going back out. So it looks like the revenue is increasing, and we need to go to take out everything except just the general fund. Look at what the general fund states. That's where you're going to see your increase and decrease. And we need to look at that. I'm just saying. Now, as far as voting for me, I've been a resident of Cottonwood for so long. I have, my entire life has been devoted to service. I am not a politician. When I put the words "council member" by my name, and somebody said, "As soon as you do that, you're a politician," I was appalled. I was like, oh my gosh, no. But what I am is somebody that is so service-oriented that that's what I want to do. I want to continue to serve. I don't have an agenda. I don't have anything on the back burner saying, "I'm going to make a million bucks." You know, this is not, I am just interested in serving. And I think because of the experience I've had, I think because of the relationships I have built over the years, that I would make an amazing council member and be able to continue to point the city in the right direction and reach out to those people that have not been reached out to in the past. Thank you.
Well, like Kyla, I'm also very service-oriented. I've spent my entire career serving other people. And I want to continue to do that. And I want to serve all of you, to be your voice at the council. Now, to listen to your ideas and your concerns and your passions and bring that to the table. Having said that, I have many years of management and leadership experience. I have managed budgets at different companies. And my budgets were always, you know, spending was always in line with the budget and that kind of thing. And so I'm very budget-minded and probably more fiscally conservative than most people think that I am. Because I'm not conservative on every issue. But, you know, the budget is really one of the biggest things that I want to address. But there are so many other issues that come up in front of the city council that you can't focus just on one issue. And I am willing to sit down with each and every one of you and listen to what you have to say, and look at all sides of the situation, and then make a decision from there on each one of those issues. And that is why you should vote for me.
I love our little community, our city. I have spent 40 years in public service, providing, taking care of, and making sure that the public was safe and well taken care of and protected. I have been involved in situations where they had no money. And by working and by being frugal and working with the community, we were able to not only build a community center, we were able to build a community garden, provide all of the county services, pardon me, including English as a second language. What am I trying to say? High school diplomas for people who needed them. Help for senior citizens on how to cook, how to take care of themselves. A police substation. And a community that came together. All of this done without any additional expenses to the community, the city, or the county, or the school district. All provided through this community coming together and working together. I continue to do these types of things with the rec center. The rec center, when we first started it out, nobody, when I started in 2000, nobody knew what a rec center was, but they knew they wanted one. When I figured out what we wanted for a rec center, I also figured out how to pay for it. And then we built it. And tonight, we're enjoying it. I know how to accomplish things with a limited income, and I want to see the city continue to grow. I want our quality of life to be the best that it can be, and one of the best in the state. And right now, it is. And that's why I want to run for the council.
All righty. First of all, I'm not a politician. I speak straight from the heart. As you can tell, I have absolutely no notes whatsoever. I'm objective. I have no personal agendas. As commander of the American Legion, going into my fourth year now, some of our goals are, of course, veterans, veterans' families, Americanism, children, and community. So I'm trying to, you know, just extend my services from the Legion into the community. I do love it here. And I really want to make this a better place to live for all of us, okay? And if, I don't know, sometimes I'm a little too abrupt, and if some people can't take it, vote for somebody else.
Well, I would just like to remind you that July 30th is the last day for registering to vote. You can go online to servicearizona.com. You can go online to servicarizona.com and make sure that you're registered. All you need is a driver's license. If you are a, well, you'll get your city ballot anyway, and if you are a Republican or a registered Democrat, you will get the ballot for one of those parties, the party that you're registered to. If you are registered as a non-affiliate or known as an independent, then you must call the county recorder's office if you haven't already filled out a form telling them which ballot you want. And of course, on your ballot will be whatever your party choices are, and also, the City of Cottonwood, because it is nonpartisan, will be on all of those ballots. So just make sure that you and all your neighbors are registered, because voting is power, and voting is, and voting is power for the people of Cottonwood. So that's the best way to be engaged. And I would urge you, as you look at the ballot, to think about Bill Tinnan, Doug Hulse, Jackie Narin, Kyla Allen, and Michael Matthews, and hopefully tonight, you have learned enough about all of them and the issues in your town to be able to make an informed decision. So thank you again for being here, and you are a wonderful audience. Thank you. And thanks to our candidates. Thank you.